Sure, uh, let's see, Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Here.
Mr. Pachus?
Present.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
And Mr. Schulman?
Here.
All right, you have a quorum.
Okay, uh, in terms of seating of, uh, members, uh, uh, unless or until, um, other members, uh, appear, um, and certainly for this very first item, uh, I'm going to seat, um, all the alternates. Um, we'll, we'll, uh, see it how it stands after the first item. Uh, and that first item is 2024 dash 47. This is just an 824 review. Something, uh, that, uh, before the planning and zoning commissions were combined was something that was handled by the planning commission, uh, on its, uh, own. And this is Recreation and Parks Department 360, Grumman Avenue, construction of new storage barn for the Gallagher Mansion. Uh, someone here, uh, representing the department? Ken?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good, thank you. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So, a, a few years prior, uh, we received a very generous grant from Senator Duff. It was a $5 million grant. And part of that grant funding included, uh, replacement of the existing garage at 360 Grumman Avenue, which we call the bunkhouse property or the south parcel of Cranberry Park. Uh, we currently use the garage as a, a semi-maintenance building. Keep some equipment in there, uh, for the maintenance of the grounds at Cranberry Park. Uh, the new build is going to be the same exact footprint. We're not extending the size at all, and we're not extending the height at all. So, uh, I'm open for questions if any of the members have any, any additional questions.
Are there any questions? Again, this is just an 824, so, um, uh, we haven't received an enormous amount of information. Um, we simply, uh, uh, need to, uh, uh, give it an okay so it can move forward.
And one question I had, I'm not sure, given the trees or if it's part of scope, but did you consider putting solar on the roof here?
Uh, so it is, it is a pretty wooded site, uh, we did look at, yeah, we did look at the possibility of solar, but we would have to cut down an inordinate amount of trees in order to get the panels in.
Okay, cool. I figured that was the answer, but I appreciate that.
Yep.
Uh, are there any other questions? Uh, I see Robert, Robert, Robert Stowers has joined us. If there are any questions, uh, for, for him.
I don't think there's any questions. I didn't look like it. And if Ken gave a good explanation, so I think we're okay.
All right, uh, if there are no other questions, um, can I, uh, have a motion to approve? Um, Galen, uh, has moved. Is there a second? And, uh, Darius, uh, and Richard have, uh, seconded. I think we can do this with just a show of hands. Uh, all those in favor? Uh, it looks like it's, uh, unanimous. Thank you, uh, and thank you, Robert.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I don't see that any additional members have, uh, uh, come, so we'll, we'll move on to the second, uh, item, uh. Uh, again, um, everyone is seated for this. 2024 dash 46 CAM, Ferndino Enterprises LLC, 5 Shorehaven Road, District 3, Block 78, Lot 38, construction of deck, uh, at a single-family, uh, residence. Uh, actually, uh, in my view, this is two decks, one on either side of their pool. Um, is there someone here, uh, representing the owner?
I don't think, uh, there-
You're frozen again, Brian.
All right, how's that?
That's better, thank you.
Um, I don't think, uh, Amelia had requested the, the applicant attend, um,
Okay.
I believe that the application itself was relatively straightforward in terms of, um, the new regulations just requiring that, uh, the increase of the CAM line, um, subjecting more applications to come before you for, uh, coastal review, um, and based on the scope of the project just being two decks. Um, she, she felt that it was a relatively straightforward application for you guys to review and that there weren't any really additional criteria, um, that the, the applicant would have to, to kind of go through.
All right, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, uh, Brian, in the past, it was anything that was within 100 feet, um, uh, that, uh, had to go through, uh, a review. Now it's 50 feet, is that correct?
Yeah, so the, the distance was increased and then I, I believe with more things were, um, or I guess I should say there were, uh, there's less exemptions of, of things that, um, don't require coastal review. Um, so this is something that, you know, last year you would not have reviewed, and then this year, uh, you do.
Right, and, uh, my reading is these, um, are not connected to the home, uh, and, uh, water can flow under them. Um, any questions? Uh, staff, staff had no negative comments on this. Staff was, uh, supportive of the project. Um, again, if not, um, let's, um, uh, I'll ask for, um, a, a motion to approve. And Darius, uh, has, uh, moved. Is there a second?
Can I second with a comment?
Sure, uh, Hector seconded, but go ahead and make your comment, Richard.
I read the, the application material as well, um, and I, and I guess I agree that it is kind of an inconsequential application, but, you know, I, I think going forward that it would really be nice if somebody was here to make a presentation, um, so we don't have to guess at things when we're making a decision. Just my opinion.
No, I agree, I agree with you, um, and, uh, Brian, and i- if you would, uh, could you, uh, pass that back to the staff?
Sure.
That even on these, uh, smaller projects, we would like, uh, to have someone present, uh, in case there are questions?
Yep, absolutely.
Good. All right, uh, we have a motion, we have a second. Again, I believe we can do this, uh, with a raise of the hands. Uh, all those in favor? Um, and there are no opposed. Okay, um, again, checking, no other commission members, uh, here, so we'll move on. The third item, 2021 dash 16, R slash S P, Workforce Partners LLC, 132 Flax Hill Road, request for, uh, bond release. Uh, this is standard practice, once the work, um, has been, uh, completed, uh, we, uh, really, uh, successfully, um, we released the bond. Uh, Brian, any comment on this?
Uh, no, on this one, Michelle, I believe they've received COs and everything for this, so they're all squared away with, with us. Okay.
Go ahead, say something on the record, Michelle. Um, okay, staff, staff has no, again, once again, uh, no, no objection to this. This is, uh, uh, you may remember, uh, those of you who've been with us for a while. This is a developer who typically, uh, does some of that missing middle, um, uh, housing, they, they, um, uh, take over older buildings and, uh, upgrade them. Uh, they don't offer the, 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 uh, amenities, nor do they charge, uh, the kinds of rents that, um, uh, the new, uh, buildings, uh, in town, uh, charge, so they're more affordable. Uh, again, a motion to, uh, release their bond? Okay, Hector has moved, I'll assume Richard, uh, has seconded. Again, I think we can do this with a show of hands. All those in favor? And it appears, uh, to be unanimous. Okay, uh, D, 2023 dash 13, S P F F D C D J V LLC, 191, uh, Main Street, District 1, Block 92, Lot 14. This is a request to modify conditions of approval for a previously approved cannabis retailer. Uh, you may recall that, um, we had, uh, requested, uh, they have solar, uh, on the, uh, roof and above their parking, and, uh, they're requesting that we remove, uh, those requests. Uh, staff comments on that? Michelle, were those, uh, yours?
Correct. Yes, so this got approved by you guys, um, the standard solar condition was placed on it, um, and then the routine is for them to come back to us, either say they're gonna install it or, um, discuss the feasibility about it. So we've been working with the applicant for a little bit now. Um, they've submitted a handful of documentation, but it hasn't been able to satisfy staff's, um, wants for the, the solar, and it didn't really show us the true feasibility. Um, I know the applicant had indicated a number of things like, um, the tree, oh, probably the only tree on the property blocking that, that small roof, um, but the report didn't show that numbers that showed it how it was not feasible, um, so then the applicant was trying to find a solar company to give us a report to say that, but we've just received, um, letters that anecdotally say that it's not feasible. So that's, that's kind of where we are, so we turned it, we agreed to turn it back to you guys, to kind of hear both sides to, um, see, uh, what should be done or how to move forward.
Yeah, the bottom line appears to be that, um, they, they have not been, uh, responsive in terms of, uh, providing, uh, real numbers uh, as to why, uh, solar is infeasible, uh, both on the roof and, and probably more particularly above the parking. Um, and, um, is there someone here representing?
Uh, hi, I'm- can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry, if you don't mind, my, I, I have my video off because my, we just moved and my internet is not great.
That's okay, this is-
Can you hear me?
This is Mr. Zacks? Hello?
So, yep, yep, this is Ben Zacks, I'll quickly show my face that I'm a real, real person and human being here, um, and not just a logo, uh, but, yeah, so we, um, you know, we've been operating under a TCO due to this, this reality. Um, I do want to note that, um, so we sent in, we've reached out to 10 different solar companies. We sent in a helioscape overview that showed the amount of, um, that showed the amount of, of kilowattage that we could get. We've had two, three different companies come back to us, all noting that it wasn't feasible. We did an IRR review based on their numbers of how much, based on their numbers of how much it would cost, and then how much of our solar we'd be able to create. One company said that there would be a negative IRR. Another company said that it just wasn't feasible, and another company's math showed it would be a 50-year return. We have a 10-year lease, um, so we did show the, the, the numbers. We also showed a overview of how much sun power would be done. That was by a Connecticut-owned company, Sea Tech Solar. We looked at Green Sky, which is a big national operator, and then another Connecticut-owned company, Telion, who all responded. We had seven other companies who didn't respond. Um, additionally, we did not look at adding solar to take up some of our parking spots because the other part of this agenda item is, um, that we were going to come back after six months of operating, whether we needed the additional two parking spots, which are above our parking requirement based on retail zoning regulations and how much parking we need. On Fridays and Saturdays and special days, we are using all of our parking spots, and so we really do not want to get rid of any of our parking. Um, and so that's why we didn't look at it in the parking lot. Additionally, we don't own the land, we're a tenant. The landlord owns the building. If there's one tree on it, the tree is approved in the site plan. And so we were sort of at a bit of a loss. I mean, I, I, I thought what I had sent in was sufficient, and staff said it wasn't, which is, which is fine, which is why we came back to here to see if, if that could be taken down. Again, w- we actually have solar in some of our other facilities. We're building solar in our cultivation. This is not a philosophical issue, it's a feasibility issue of having a, a small roof with a, with a, with a tree blocking it and not wanting to spend money on it on something that's going to take longer than our rent to pay back, and other companies not wanting to even bid it because on their initial reviews, it didn't make sense. And so I think Michelle added, or staff, sorry, I should say, added all of those pieces of documentation to the, um, to this, I, I, I'd imagine, but, um, that's sort of where, where we are.
Comments or questions from, uh, commission members? Diana? Diana, you-
Sorry, yeah, sorry, Luke.
Okay.
Um, when I was looking at the site, I didn't have a site plan, but is it true that just the one tree is, is actually on your property? It kind of looks like it's on the neighbor's property.
That, it's technically, that one's technically on our property behind the back left corner. The, the landlord does own both properties, but they are different, um, parcels.
I see, okay. And one other question, is it possible for you to sell any of the excess electricity back to the, to the grid and make up any money, make up any money there?
From our understanding, it would, it was only going to cover, it was only going to cover a percentage of our own, um, of our own electricity needs. And so there wasn't even going to be the opportunity to sell any back, which is why the IRR looked like, you know, again, one company said it was going to be a negative IRR, and one company said it was going to be about a 40 to 50-year return. The other company didn't, um, which would, you know, could be roughly 2, 2 and 1/2%. And then the other company just said it wasn't feasible in the letter, and then five other, seven other companies didn't respond to the RFP.
But that's all for the roof, right?
All, all for the, all for the roof.
Did you get any information about the parking lot? And I know you said you don't ideally not want to lose the additional parking, but do you have a sense of feasibility, including that? Because that may help staff fully understand the full picture here.
I, I did, I did not, because we can't afford to lose the parking spots, and so we didn't review getting rid of parking for it. I can, I can ask how many parking spots it would be, but that would be an operational issue and likely a traffic issue because of it. Because if we have people circling around the lot-
Is there no way operationally, um, that you might, uh, be able to, um, spread out, uh, the traffic, uh, to your facility so that, uh, you didn't need, uh, those additional two spots?
I, no, we have a pretty sort of clear demand cycle and schedule of our, of our facility, of our facility, you know, Fridays and Thursday nights and Saturdays up until 4:00 PM are really busy, and then we have, you know, sort of holiday weekends that are especially busy, right? We're not using all the parking spots all the time by any means, but we can't really define what the customer is going to do, and we found in other towns where we tried to do that, you know, customers come when they come, even if the rules show it, and so it doesn't impact traffic ultimately, or parking use, because people stop and come in.
So you, you don't, uh, set up your sales, uh, through appointments?
No. No, we never, we never have, and in the, we're, we operate in 13 locations across Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Georgia, and all the towns where we've tried to implement that, it's actually been rescinded by the zoning boards, um, to, to try and impact appointment because people don't end up actually, right, like, if you're just going to Google where to come to, they just show up. So like, sort of, adjusting the goals of the timeline doesn't actually adjust what people do in terms of traffic. In our Norwalk location, about 85, we're only at about 13% pre-order, too. It's most people coming in when they come in and walking in and making the purchase, or driving in and making the purchase.
If it's the same owner who owns the lot next door, is it, it's the same owner who owns the lot for the vital care pharmacy, is that right? The-
Is that what the new thing is? It was like a bodega before, I-
Yeah, I, I think, uh, yeah, La Placida grocery, I'm just looking at Google Maps.
Yeah, yeah, they, they-
Can they spare two spa- I've never seen that place overflowing, where like, you can work out some overflow there, so you feel like you can explore the parking lot option?
So, we, during our busiest days, we, you know, he's a nice landlord and the tenant there is nice as well, and they allow our staff to park in there, but they don't, we, we've sort of have an agreement that they don't want customers and overflow going into there, other than cars that are going to be parked all day. Um, I don't know exactly how we can require quote-unquote them to allow us to use that parking on a separate parcel.
Can't require them, this is more of a conversation to try to figure out how to,
um, yeah, I mean, I'm-
Make it possible.
I'm more than happy, I'm more than happy to reach out, um, I'm more than happy to reach out, I guess, and look, Michelle has been incred- staff has been, I'm sorry to call my name, staff has been incredibly, um, you know, help, like, helpful and responsive in this, and it's, it's been, you know, I, I, I'm a little confused as to what, because the, 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 the condition says to either install or show the feasibility, that it doesn't. And I'm a little confused about what is deemed feasible, because we have sent a helioscape review of how much kilowattage would be covered. We have sent multiple companies who are showing the one, you know, the pu- internal rate of return. You know, I've got a, I've got in my team as a finance background, and so we showed the, the cost and the, the payback period. I'm a little confused about like, what the definition of feasibility means to a, a, allow this to show, like, I'd love to do this, but it's just the numbers don't seem to play out.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, and thi- thi- this goes to the question that, that Nick raised. Um, it doesn't appear that you've done that analysis for the parking lot. And I think that's probably what we're looking for at this point. You know, I think-
So you-
Have, have that, have that conversation with the neighbor and the landlord. Uh, see if it's possible to work something out.
Okay.
Um, and then-
Okay.
Uh, come, come, come back to us, uh, with, uh, with what you've learned.
Okay, can I just ask the, so there's sort of two agenda items, not two agenda items, if there's two notes on our thing, which is, the second was, was getting rid of parking space number, I think it's 22 and 23, or 23 and 24? Um, that's the other thing, right? Um, I, I, as the operator, and knowing just the nature of our business, and candidly, the success we've had, right? It's a good problem for our business and for the taxes of the town that were using these parking spots. So I want to just take a step away from the solar piece and, because the other part of this was to come back after a few months and give feedback, and, you know, we have, you know, the, again, this is a little bit more anecdotal, but, um, we generally have about, um, nine to 11 of our 74 open hours a week, where we are using all of the parking spots, and there are people circling around. And we worry that if there were to be a request to lose parking, it would be both an operational and a traffic issue, which was the second part of what we were trying to look at, whether, I think there was supposed to be, it would have been potentially landscaping put there, which I guess could have been, could be solar, but I, I would do anything for more parking, let alone having less.
We're, 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 we're not, we're not necessarily opposed, uh, to your keeping those, uh, uh, two spots, but let's take a look at them, um, uh, first, uh, let's take a look at the, uh, solar issue, um, and then, uh, the, uh, parking issue. I think we can, you know, depending on the information you get to us, we should be able to address both of those at the same meeting.
Um, okay.
We're not, we're not talking about, um, uh, ho- holding this, uh, up, um, uh, for an extended period of time.
Okay, yeah, I will reach out, I'll reach out to the firms just to get a few pieces. I'll speak to the landlord, and then would you like me to send those analyses in via staff, or should I send that? Just, I know there's mechanics to this as, to this as well.
Continue to work with, with Michelle and the other staff members.
All right, okay. All right, appreciate you all, thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, uh, our next item of business is, uh, a, uh, uh, be- be- before I do that, Darius, at one point I saw your hand up, is there a question you wanted to ask? And did I miss it? Did I cut off, cut you off?
Yeah, I was just, uh, thinking about the, uh, what they were saying about the return on investment and the feasibility of it, but I think the way that we, uh, just left off is more than reasonable.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize, um, I only caught that out of the corner of my eye.
No problem, thank you.
Sorry for being late.
Go ahead, JJ.
No, I'm, said I'm in.
Oh, okay, I saw, I saw that, uh, but, uh, we still, uh, uh, have, uh, two people who have, uh, not yet, uh, signed in. Uh, so, uh, everyone, uh, for the public hearing, everyone's going to be seated. Um, and, uh, that's the next item. 2024 dash 45, uh, S P Lemus Tire Shop LLC, 318 Strawberry Hill Avenue, District 5, Block 17, Lot 144, motor vehicle body shop use within existing building. Um, since this is a, uh, public hearing, let me explain how we, uh, conduct the hearings. Um, the owner or the owner's representative will be given, uh, as much time as they need to, uh, explain, uh, the project. Uh, during that time, commission members, uh, are welcome to ask any questions, uh, they wish. Uh, when, uh, the owner or owner's representative, uh, has completed the presentation, uh, we will open, uh, the meeting up to the public. Um, and, um, at that point, uh, Brian will explain to people, uh, how you can raise your hand, uh, to be recognized so you can speak. Um, we, uh, ask that you give us, uh, your name, your address, um, and, uh, just, um, keep your comments civil. Um, we don't set time limits, uh, on, uh, how long you can speak, but we do ask, um, that you try to be as considerate as possible and keep them as short as possible, while making certain that you've covered everything that's, uh, important to you. Uh, we say that because you only have one opportunity to speak. Uh, after everyone's had an opportunity to speak, we will close, uh, the, um, uh, public portion of, uh, the hearing and turn it back, uh, to the owner or owner's representative, uh, for comments on what they've heard. Uh, again, during that period, the commission members, uh, will, uh, have an opportunity to ask any questions, uh, they wish. Um, when, uh, that's completed, we will close the public hearing and, uh, go into, uh, uh, a meeting exclusively of the members of the, uh, commission, uh, to try and reach a, uh, decision on the matter. And, uh, with that, uh, I'll, uh, invite, um, uh, Attorney Hall, uh, to speak about the project.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. Hopefully this hearing will go more smoothly than the last one I had before this commission. Firstly, I'd like to say, I'd like to thank Brian Baker for all his assistance in, um, getting this application in, and, and I do appreciate the, the staff comments, and I appreciate the commission members taking their time out of their busy schedules to attend, because, um, I know we're having a heck of a time getting people to sign up for the wetlands meeting, actually 10 meetings. Uh, my wife is on the Conservation Commission in Wilton, and she had a tough time getting a quorum tonight, so it's never easy, and, and I appreciate the fact that you, um, you all take that time to come here. Um, this is a fairly simple application, um, I think, imagine your, most of you are familiar with the location of the property. If you, um, if you're exiting Jordans off of- If you, um, if you're exiting Jordans off of Route one, this, this location is right across the street. I can call up a picture on Google if you need it, but it, it, there's not, there's not much to see. Um, we're applying to use the rear lower portion of the building located at three eighteen Strawberry Hill, um, to, for a tire shop. It was previously a body shop, so I think this is kind of a, a diminution of the use as far as the neighbors might be concerned. We're not doing any towing, um, you know, going back to, uh, it's a permitted use in the zone, uh, subject to your approval. Going to the staff comments, I think they're pretty positive. The one thing I would like to put out to the commission, uh, we have no problem not using the parking spaces in the front. Obviously, that should be a condition, um, we have no intention of using those and not part of our application. Um, I would like to put it to the commission that, um, I'm not sure I agree, uh, Mr. Baker about the characterization of it as a bot- preferably as a body shop rather than as a motor vehicle maintenance repair facility. I was looking at it, you know, I mean, we're all, I think we're all trying, you probably less than me, trying to adjust to these, uh, changes in the zoning regulations. And, you know, I, I kind of pegged it as a, as a repair, you know, tire replacement, you know, parts kind of thing rather than as a, uh, you know, body shop where you're using adjustment, painting, replacement of parts or body repair motor vehicles. But I leave it to the commission. Either way is going to be fine with us. We have no intention of doing towing or any other repairs there other than strictly the, um, you know, the, the, uh, sale and installation of tires and the repair of, you know, flat tires or whatever. But we're not doing any telling. I have no, uh, no other comments unless the commission has any questions.
Uh, are there any, uh, questions?
So, um, I do have a question, um, what are your hours of operation?
I think they're going to be, um, you know, generally the same hours as any, any tire shop, um, I, I don't know for certain. Um, but they might, they might go as late as seven just to help people who are coming off, coming off work. I think they're going to open, not, not really early, but like probably eight o'clock. So I, I'd peg eight to seven for my preferable ones. I mean, that, that's the hours I see Hank Mays operating and, 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 uh, tire town fair, you know, those are, those are kind of more or less, town fair is, is often closed, um, when I need them. Uh, but, you know, I think, I think that would be a ballpark on the hours, but, you know, if you want to put some kind of a limitation, that wouldn't, wouldn't be.
Well, I was thinking more like, what are your weekend hours?
I think we're going to be open same hours on the weekend for sure. I mean, that's, that's going to be the time where we're trying to, um, you know, most people who are buying tires, you know, really only have the time to do it on the weekends, so I think that might be our, our busy time. But we're, we're a small facility, so we're not going to be like crowding, you know, all these people in or anything like that. I don't know, and, and I think I can anticipate your next question. It's going to be like, well, how much drop in traffic do you think we're going to get as opposed to, you know, how much, uh, you know, people calling up for appointments? I know when I go, I get most of my tires from Hank Mays, um, you know, when I go in there, there's a waiting period, you know, they have a pretty big parking lot and things, um, you know, we comply with the parking requirements. We've got three big bays there, so we're going to be doing most of the work inside. Um, I, you know, all the work inside as far as I know. So I don't think, I don't think parking is going to be a problem, but maybe in our advertising, we suggest that people call first just to make sure that there's an opportunity for, to sneak them in. I think tire.
Outdoor operations, kind of like how Currys is, everything's out in the open, the. It's, you know, a lot of noise, so it's not going to be that type of operation.
No. No, that's, um, I love Currys, don't get me wrong, but that, that is, that is just a crazy kind of situation over there. And we don't have that opportunity. We're not going to be out in front of the building because we're, we're not, we're not, you know, we're around, we're only around back. If you want to look at a picture, I got one, but, you know, if you're familiar with the property, if you look at the building to the, to the, to your.
Can, can you put up a picture, please?
Yeah, 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 actually, because I anticipated that, but I, I wasn't able to do it. It said was I was in practice mode before. Okay, so, oh, cool.
JJ, I, I don't recall the resolution on this, but, uh, we can certainly put language in the resolution to address that issue.
Thank you.
Righty. Can you guys see that now?
Uh, just came up, yeah.
All right, so this is the building here with the parking we're not using. And then this is our driveway back to where we're going to be. So you really can't even see what's going on back there, although there are ten parking spots back there, there's plenty of room. And the lower section of this building has like, I mean, it's like, I, I think we put the dimensions in the application, but I think they're twelve foot high built, uh, ceilings and stuff. I mean, it's a really big space for the garage. It's right behind the Shell station, you can see, and if you, and if you, if you, I, I don't think I can move it while it's shared, maybe, um.
Yeah, I do see that it, it is hidden from view from the street.
Yeah, and Jordans, so if you were leaving Jordans from the, the, from the back parking lot, you're, this is your view as you're leaving, you know, this is, it's right across the street.
Okay, so yeah, I was just thinking just a- as far as a business model, how Currys do and how that intersects with, um, onc- oncoming traffic, people trying to get in and out. And especially during a busy part of the day, that could be, um, right along, um, Westwood Avenue, very dangerous.
Yeah, well, the good thing is, you know, everybody's going to have to, you know, everybody's going to go back there, get their tires and come out frontways. You know, nobody's backing out on any street or anything like this. It's a totally different scenario. I understand why you're bringing up Currys because it's like, you know, but, and I love those guys, I mean, they've been there for a hundred years. But that's not, that's not what we intend, no.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you for the question.
Go ahead, Diana.
So I'm a little bit confused because I believe you're renting the lower level and that's approximately half of the square footage of the property and the upper level is vacant. Where, so are you planning on using all ten of the spaces at the rear of the building?
Yes.
So I don't know what kind of parking that leaves for the other tenant, should there be one.
Uh, they get that front tenant, uh, front parking and that's, you know, frankly, not to sound too dismissive, but that's not my problem. It's, you know, we got, we got the ten in the back and, and that's part of our lease, so.
So your lease does, um, give you the ten spaces in the back?
Yes, the, the entire, from the driveway back is our space and we're responsible for taking care of the driveway, the total maintenance and plowing and everything with the back spaces. And, um, I, I think it's going to be a really good, good, uh, place to have this business in, in my humble opinion. Not that I picked it, the client did, but.
And Diana, for, for zoning purposes, the, the Mr. Hall's tenant or Attorney Hall's tenant, while they may have like the contractual agreement to use all of those parking spaces, that's probably in excess of what the use calls for in terms of just what the zoning requires for off-street parking requirements. So a tenant could occupy the rest of the building depending on what it is. But it, it would be on the, the property owner then to figure out kind of how to divvy up the parking spaces.
That'll be interesting. Okay, thank you.
Well, I, I actually, Anthony D'Amico's been, you know, kind of part and parcel of this whole process and involved. And I'm, I'm not sure if you're familiar with him, he wanted to attend tonight. It's probably to your advantage that he isn't having a computer at home and he can't attend. But, uh, but he's, he's, uh, he seems like a very, um, helpful person, so I'm sure he'll be able to work something out that, you know, doesn't interfere with, unduly with what's going on on that street with the front lot, front, uh, space.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Uh, if not, any other comments, Attorney Hall, before we open it up to the public?
No, I just did, did want to throw that out there. I don't know how you guys want to characterize as the body shop or the vehicle maintenance, you know? I mean, we're kind of working through the new, the new regs now and, and, you know, they're a little bit, uh, you know, new.
Okay, uh, then we will, uh, open it up, uh, to the, uh, public. Brian, uh, would you please explain how members of the public, uh, can, uh, access to site?
Sure, so members of the public, if you'd like to speak, uh, regarding this application, you can use the raise your hand tool, it's at the bottom of your screen. You click that once, and if you're dialing on a cell phone, uh, you would hit star nine. You have one person, and then just a reminder to say your first and last name for us and your address.
Please, go ahead.
My name is Stefania. I live at three twenty-nine Strawberry Hill. Um, thank you for the explanation about the ten parking spots. I didn't make it clear about that. However, I was just concerned in the morning, around seven AM through two, through seven thirty, there's a lot of traffic just for high school buses and everything, so, you know, I was just, and then there's a lot of people. Then that we have another school around eight at Kendall. And, uh, uh, believe it or not, we're still having all the traffic through the Strawberry Hill Avenue. So I was just trying, I, I hear you that you're planning to do around seven AM, so I was just planning to know. I know you say you have ten parking spots and I think it will make it easier for traffic, but I just, that will be my major concern monthly, Monday through Friday. And of course, the weekend is a really quiet sun and you're saying that the busy, uh, your busy hours, the peak hours are during the weekend. So I was just want to make clear how you will want to deal with the, like, the peak hours in the morning with the bus traffic and everything.
Matt, do you want me to respond?
No, uh, we'll wait until everyone's spoken, uh, then, then you'll have an opportunity to speak. All right, thank you very much.
Hey, next we have, uh, a person named Jeff.
Yes, hi, um, you said that there.
I'm sorry, Jeff, can you, can you give us your full name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Jeff Wilkins, two eleven Strawberry Hill Avenue.
Thank you.
You said that the upstairs is vacant, but it seems like there is an air conditioning place upstairs and they have their vehicles in the back. Are you sure about those ten spaces? Because I was under the assumption it was seven up, seven down. Isn't that a requirement by zoning?
All right, thank you for the question. Uh, hopefully we'll get an answer to that.
I have one more question too after that.
Go ahead.
Um, is this licensed with the state of Connecticut and if so, under what name? And that's all my questions.
Thank you.
And if anyone else would like to speak, uh, please use the raise your hand tool or dial star nine. That appears to be it, Mr. Schulman.
Okay, uh, then we will, uh, turn it back to Attorney Hall uh, for, uh, comment on, uh, what he's heard from the two speakers.
Um, like I said, I, you know, I think all we can do is, is, um, we're going to try to control the ingress and egress. Obviously, it's tough for a, a new business that's opening to turn away business, um, but I think, you know, it's a small operation and it's, I don't think it's going to be, create a traffic problem on Strawberry Hill Avenue. As far as the first, uh, person is concerned, uh, the second person, it's not a regulated use by the, um, by the state. Um, the installation of tires, so there will be no state permit, um, required or obtained. And, um, as far as the HVAC people goes, the rear area has been, um, vacant for a while. And, um, and I think the, the landlord has allowed them to use the space. You know, if they didn't want to back into, into Strawberry Hill or, you know, it's, it's an easier place to park and leave. Um, so, you know, I, we're, we're renting the back area, the bike parking lot and the, um, rear, uh, space, so I don't think the, um, the front lot's going to be using that.
All right, uh, are there, uh, other questions, uh, for Attorney Hall?
I just have, I just have one, Mr. Schulman for Attorney Hall. Um, it's just reg- regarding those three front parking spaces, I, I don't believe we have records that grandfather those in as legal parking spaces. They're not in a, in a layout that we would permit today. Just a concern that if whoever, if there is a second tenant in the building or, uh, if there were ever to be one, that those parking spaces, I, I mean, it would be probably ideal for the city if those were removed and became some sort of landscaping with the sidewalk connecting from, from the gas station up. I just don't know if there's any concern if, if those three parking spaces were to go away, if that's an, an issue for, for your tenant or any future tenants to, to utilize the space.
Yeah, honestly, it's not, it's not an issue for me. It might be an issue for Mr. D'Amico. It's, uh, I don't know, I don't know if it's grandfathered or not, I can't, I mean, I'll, I'll see to you that analysis. But again, I, I mean, I just can't control it, you know, we have, we have the parking back there shown on our plans. Mr. D'Amico has approved our, the plans we submitted to the city, so, you know, I, I kind of have to just, I can't make any representations regarding the front parcel. All I can tell you is what we're doing in the back. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I think just from, from our perspective, uh, we would encourage that those parking spaces not exist and we just want to make sure that functionally for the building that whoever is using those spaces would have the ability to also use the back parking lot as well.
I, I guess, I guess if, um, you know, maybe you can, if you wanted to, put in a proviso more or less along the lines of the previous application for the, um, cannabis facility, you know, where I think there was some issue left open regarding whether or not they needed all their parking spaces and what their use was going to be and, you know, six months down the line, kind of take a, take a look back and, um, and see what's going on with the building. Um, I don't, like I said, we have three bays. I don't think the parking admits to using the outside area to do anything, um, you know, to back, to go in and out of the bays. I know Currys does it, so, uh, you know, but we don't intend to do that. So, you know, are, do we need all ten? Probably nine. We do have people who are working there, who are going to park there, so, you know, we're going to have at least four people working there, so that's four spaces, so that leaves six. We got three bays, you know, maybe we're working on three cars and we have three waiting. In my opinion, I think the, um, the tenant, my client, the applicant wants to, you know, use all ten, uh, I, I don't know what to tell you about the first three, honestly. I can't, I can't make a representation that we'd be able to share the rear, uh, spaces, um, and turn away, turn away, um, clients.
I apologize if this was raised before, but, um, Brian, has zoning staff spoken with the owner about that specific thing? Because I see there's the condition that the three parking spaces get removed. But that's, you know, that's something the owner would have to do, not the tenant. And then the question of where would the people on the second floor park would need to get resolved.
Right, so we haven't reached out to the, the property owner themselves, um, just the comments.
Do you want me to give him a call? Like I said, he wanted to attend, you know, like.
It seems weird to put the condition on there without having the property owner. I mean, I know the application is from the tenant, but.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. It puts the tenant in a difficult position where they don't have control over the property or what happens to the property. So I, I agree with your point, uh, Anna.
Would it make sense, uh, therefore, to defer action on this until, uh, we have that information?
May I speak to that issue, Mr. Chairman? I, I would really rather not. We, our tenants, he started last month. And I really appreciated Mr. Baker getting us on the agenda as quickly as he did. Um, I know the, Mr. D'Amico is. No. No, that's okay, I'll call him tomorrow. It's John Hall. Yes.
In the event we're unable to hear from the, um, the, uh, tenant, should we defer action? How does the commission feel?
Well, another thing I was wondering was, um, you know, getting the applications from a tenant to change the, or to make official the use. you know, getting the applications from a tenant to change the, or to make official the use. And it's sort of like in the context of that application, we've discovered a zoning violation that should be issued to the owner. And perhaps those are like two separate things. As opposed to conditioning the use, which has been existing sort of illicitly or, or, or without approval. Um, if there's a problem with the parking and the building that gets addressed through zoning violations, right?
I don't know how there can be a zoning violation right now if there's no kind of in the front of the building. Um, I, I think that what Mr. Hall had to say is, is correct. He's there on behalf of an applicant. The landlord owner of the property has signed off on the plans. The plans meet all of our requirements. I don't know why we should be concerned with whether the landlord's going to have enough parking for his next tenant. That concern would come in when he comes in for an application.
Brian, comment on that?
Yeah, I think the difficulty is, is that, uh, an application is essentially being made with, uh, the potentially non-compliant parking in the front, whether it was grandfathered or not is undetermined. So we would defer to saying it's, it's not been grandfathered in. Um, now we can request that the tenant and or property owner resolve that issue as part of a condition of approval. Or we can, and which I would be to Mr. Rowena's point, saying that this application, the use itself, the tenant is not responsible for the violation. Um, so as part of that condition, they could resolve the issue. Uh, but to Anna's point, it could potentially be resolved through, uh, some sort of violation, if it is a violation. And then once that's cleared up, it would clear the way for the applicant, uh, the, the approval.
Well, again, are you suggesting therefore that we defer action? Or that we, uh, take action and, um, force the issue?
Um, to me it is, the only concern is if you do take action and we say, okay, the property owner is responsible for resolving this potential issue. And then, uh, what it'll ultimately end up doing is holding up our ability to issue a certificate of zoning compliance to the applicant. Um, you know, if, if they don't follow through with all of the conditions of approval at the time that they need that certificate, certificate of zoning compliance, then they're going to be essentially unable to operate.
Right. So how is that different from deferring action?
Right. That's what I'm saying is. Yes. Yep.
Brian, could you repeat what you just said? Because I, I did not follow that.
So if there, if we condition a special permit to say that those parking spaces need to be removed and the property owner either is not agreeable to that or, uh, takes a prolonged period of time. Planning and zoning isn't going to be able to issue a certificate of zoning compliance for the tenant because of that condition not being satisfied at the time of, of issue.
Okay. I, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that first part that you said about if we condition.
Right.
Um, I, I don't, I don't know how, how we would have the right to condition, um, an approval on removing parking spaces that these guys have no control over.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's a similar situation as somebody comes in to apply for a zoning permit over the counter and something on their plans or on their existing site is not compliant or is, would technically be a zoning violation. We would say you need to resolve that before we can issue you your permit.
So technically at this moment, if the owner is taking the position that the parking spaces are in fact are in fact, um, either legal or legally non-conforming, it's not really a zoning violation until you guys issue one saying that it isn't. And then he has the right to defend himself, I presume.
That's correct.
So I, I just, I really don't think it's fair that we put the burden of this on a tenant who has got an agreement with his landlord as to what he's getting.
Are we allowed legally to approve a use change on a property where we have observed a violation?
So because it's not, it's not confirmed whether or not it is a violation, right? I notice a violation has not been issued regardless of what the plan shows. The property is therefore not in violation of the zoning regulations. So I mean, what I think you could potentially do to Mr. Rowena's point is you could say that this use is compliant. It satisfies the, the, the special permit criteria for the use. And then zoning staff would follow up to one, determine if this parking is grandfathered in or not. And if it's not, then they would issue a violation to the property owner.
That's what makes the most sense to me. It's like, if you observe that there's something that you think is a violation, then separately you refer it to the violation people to sort that out. And if there's a way to approve it so that they can move forward, I'd like to approve it.
Okay. Yeah, we can take, it sounds like that is a route that we can take then.
All right. Let me, let's go back to, uh, Attorney Hall. Uh, Attorney Hall, uh, you may not know, but you're muted. Uh, do you have any further comments before we close the public hearing?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had muted when I tried to call Mr. D'Amico. Um, so I think to, uh, Mr. Rena's point, you know, the, the, if you look at the staff comments, it says, you know, the applicant in his tire shop is not proposing to utilize these parking spaces as part of our application. And that's it. I mean, that's all, that's all our application involves. You know, we have adequate parking in the back. It's a permitted use in the zone. Um, you know, the, the status of, of whether or not there may be a violation in the front. I, I just have to say is not our concern. We're really desperate to start, uh, to, to open and start using the location as soon as possible. Um, again, I appreciate the, um, as, as quickly as they moved to get us on to today's agenda. Uh, but you know, as, as far as, you know, the condition of the draft resolution, I, I suppose that condition should come out because I'm not sure it has anything to do with us. Um, and if you find out there's a violation in the front, you know, I was looking at the Google history pictures. It looks like it's been used pretty much, um, since two thousand twelve. I know that doesn't necessarily predate zoning in the area or an age up zoning or whatever occurred. Um, but, you know, I, I would, I would love for the commission to go ahead and, and vote on it tonight, um, without the condition that the landlord has to remove the three spaces in the front.
Okay. Um, is that it for your presentation?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Are there any final questions before we close the hearing? All right. Seeing none, uh, we'll close the hearing and we'll go on to, uh, our own, uh, discussion. Um, is there, uh, uh, a mo, in order to get it opened, uh, is there a, a motion to approve the resolution? That will simply allow it. Richard is moving uh, to approve the resolution. That'll allow us to put the resolution up. Uh, is there a second? Okay. And Darius has seconded. So let's pull up the resolution and start from there. A good deal larger, however.
So then I think there's, there's a couple, uh, things that we need to.
A little larger?
Sure. So the, the first is, uh, the determination of whether it's a motor vehicle body shop use or a motor vehicle maintenance, repair, fuel sales service or cleaning facility.
It's really, it's really neither of those, Brian. And I assume we don't have a, a tire shop use?
Uh, tire shop is not specific, a specific use within the regulations. Um, I mean, they, this right, like for motor vehicle.
Let me ask you a question. How are we defining the new tire shop that Costco is putting in?
Um, I, I believe it would fall under, I mean, I'll take a look at the approval. I believe it would fall under one of these two. Um,
I think it's va, vehicle maintenance. Because you don't need to break it, you, you know, I, I don't think we need to break it down to like to the T on, on that.
Well, my only, my only concern Hector is I don't want things like fuel cells listed in there.
Right. So I was, so within the resolution, if, if, if we do determine it's that use, that's, that's completely fine for us to determine it's that, it's that use. Um, we would just put in language, which I believe I had captured. Um, stating this would, this would change, but that they shall not have sale of some motor vehicles, no fuel sales or towing services. That way those are probably the, the three large ones. Um,
And is there no way of putting in the, the words tire shop?
As a specific use in the, within the regulations?
Yeah, or even a sub-use under motor vehicle body shop.
Yeah, we can, I, with the, the revisions we're looking at now, we could certainly add that language.
Okay. Um,
But Brian, it, why do we have to have that language that it won't include fuel sales? If the one we're going for is the motor vehicle body shop? Wouldn't we use that language if we went for the, the other one?
Um, so if you're just calling it a motor vehicle body shop, then no, you don't need to include that language. Uh, if, if we're going to call it a motor vehicle maintenance, repair, fuel cell service, then we would need to include that language so that we're, we're clearly saying this is solely for, uh, tire repair replacement, uh, uh, business.
Okay. And in the draft, it says that the approved use is a motor vehicle body shop.
Right.
Which is the one that doesn't need any caveats.
Right.
So that's where I'm confused with number three.
Right. So it's, it's kind of just, um, yeah, just, uh, in case the issue came up of let's call it this, then I just wanted, I mean, I was always just kind of like belts and suspenders with that language.
Right.
Yeah, body shop was the suggested terminology, correct?
Right. Either way, I believe whatever definition we choose or whatever use we choose, it would, would, it would allow, uh, the applicant to, to operate out of the site.
All right. So why don't we remove that, uh, second use?
Okay. So we're okay with calling it motor vehicle body shop?
Right.
Okay. All right. Then we can pull out that.
And if we, if we remove the condition, is there any benefit to saying something like, um, applicant who is a tenant has been made aware that there is a possible zoning violation on the property that is being referred to zoning enforcement for review?
You know, if it's your, Anna, if it's irrelevant to, um, our action here, uh, I would leave it out.
Okay.
Um, but this is the, the language that we should edit then further. Um, it's regarding the removal of those spaces. So what I, I would suggest is that we just state clearly that those three parking spaces are in no way, shape or form being legalized per this approval.
That sounds fine. And JJ, your concern?
Hi. Yeah. My, my concern was, was use of the front. But he says that it's, it's actually in the back.
Okay.
Right. But, um, also it was the hours of operation, um, in consideration of the neighbors. That it would, that, that it would not go past, did he say seven o'clock?
Yes.
On Saturday and, and not on Sundays?
Uh, he was silent. I, uh, I mean, he's indicating, indicating the weekends are busy times for him. So I assumed that this was a seven day operation.
Oh. Well, within reasonable hours of operation, that, that was just my concern. And also for the safety of, of cars entering and exiting, but to his credit, everything is from the back.
Right.
Yep.
Um, I also in looking at, uh, the property, um, again, I'm not a traffic expert, but it seems to me there ought to be a stop sign. Uh, so that when cars are exiting and going on to Strawberry Hill, they're required to stop before they, uh, make that their left or right-hand turn.
Yes. Thank you for pointing that out.
Did you mean a private stop sign?
Um, yeah, I guess so.
In other words, within the confines of the, the driveway, right? When they get to the end.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay.
I guess end or beginning depending on what side of the driveway.
At the end of the driveway, uh, as one exits on to Strawberry Hill Avenue.
And then I, I, now I didn't specify hours of operation. Um, I just put in that the door should be closed while the, any cars are being worked on. Hopefully that helps alleviate any sort of noise issues. Um, I'm not sure if that's sufficient for, um, your concern, JJ, or if you want any, anything else?
To further address JJ's, uh, issue, uh, all, all work shall be conducted inside the building.
Yes.
Yeah, I would hate to limit them, you know, if the doors are shut, you know, a limit.
I'm sorry, Nick. I don't follow you.
I was saying with, I think four, JJ, I think four gets the essence of what you're trying. Three and four gets to the essence of what you want for us being rather prescriptive on hours and whatnot.
Right, right. I mean, my, my, my concern was primarily hours of operations in regards to the neighborhood. And the noise and air quality, that was my concern. But it sounds as though that is being addressed. So I don't have any other concerns. Thank you.
Okay, um, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the amended resolution.
Okay, Richard has, uh, moved. Is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay, uh, Hector has, uh, seconded. Uh, let's do a roll call.
Certainly. Let's see. Uh, Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Pachus?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Okay, good. Interesting discussion. Um, we now, um, move on to the, uh, um, continuing zoning regulation revisions uh, per the, uh, uh, staff recommendations. Uh, Brian, you're going to handle that?
Sure. Uh, let's start with the EC staff.
Okay.
All right. So I had sent to you, um, an updated or revised memo dated August thirtieth. Um, this included, um, some additional suggestion, suggested changes that staff was recommending as well as some tweaks based on our last discussion, um, on August twenty-first. Uh, so the first item here is related to section six point eight point two of the regulations. Um, what this section talks about is absent elements, which includes things like, uh, sidewalks, street trees, bike lanes, um, things like that. And what it, the regulation requires is that for any sort of development, you, if any of those items are missing, you are required to put them in. Um, and the issue is that that could be really burdensome on, uh, say a person who is just constructing a single family home or doing a relatively minor project. And also for city staff where, where. And also for city staff where we're saying you need to put a sidewalk in when potentially there were no plans. For the city to ever have installed a sidewalk, or it's not on their plans for uh quite some time. So it kind of uh is difficult for um city staff to kind of adjust on the fly to a development coming in. And it kind of leads to like a piecemeal approach to to how we want to address this issue. So what we had done is we kept in the requirement that you have to provide these absent elements if they are missing. But we added in this red language here, which gives uh the Department of Public Works. And TMP the ability to essentially waive that if it's not on their radar for installation. You know, in in the in the near future. So it kind of gives them the discretion. Um, because again, it's not you, planning and zoning staff can't have the discretion if you're coming in with an over the counter permit. Neither needs to be a yes or a no answer. Um, so this gives uh departments who can't have the discretion, the ability to say uh yes or no. To to these requirements. And then jump in if you have any questions, otherwise we can we can move on. Alright, the next one was uh child daycare centers. I know that you guys have an ad hoc committee who's who's looking at this further. This was not intended to um step on on their toes or, you know, kind of go into that. What this uh was based on was uh in discussions with a potential applicant. Uh, for a project uh in uh the CD four zone. Uh, they had mentioned that they would like to put in a child daycare center as kind of like one of the uses on the ground floor of the building. But the problem was is that that triggers a special permit. Um, but just for the use itself, regardless of if it's a new building, existing building. Um, so so we kind of looked at the child daycare center definition and said. Maybe in these downtown zones or mixed use zones, that a special permit that use doesn't arise to a special permit uh criteria. Uh, so we would, we suggested uh within the mixed use zones, making it a site plan review use, which is a little bit more expedited. Um, and then within the single family and two family zones. Uh, because it is allowed accessory to certain uses which are listed here. We would take those out of saying not permitted and switch to special permit use with limitations. And then here are your limitations. And then this is just kind of a a a step. And then obviously, whatever the ad hoc committee comes up, we add that um uh that language within here.
And just a question about this?
True.
Uh, wasn't it, it was the case previously that. In the residential, in those four zones, it was permitted as an accessory use. To religious. So are you saying that that NP was essentially an error previously? We're sort of fixing that typo?
Right, right.
Okay, so this doesn't actually enact any of the changes that we've been discussing. Or drafting in our ad hoc committee. Item one fixes what was a typo or an error.
Right.
And item two makes it. Easier to put a center in a commercial area by changing it from special permit, which is what it was. To site plan.
Correct. And then we I also proposed to to remove the thirty five children cap in the five hundred square foot. Of lot area per child. I'm not sure where those measurements came from.
Yeah.
My mom, my mother operated a a daycare and preschool for thirty years um in Wallingford. And her cap was forty five students, and that was not a large center at all. So looking at the thirty five number, it seems extremely limiting.
Yeah, and I can tell you that as part of the ad hoc group, we couldn't really find. Where those numbers um sort of came from.
I think those come from the um the organization that gives the permits, like the NYAEC, I think is one of them is called.
You mean the OEC?
Yeah, I think it's it's one of those organizations that said like the same thing that that gives you the number of um children. Per feature uh type of thing.
So we looked at that, we looked at that, and the OEC regulations are like entirely different. They don't have um a square foot of lot area per child. They have a square foot of outside play area requirement. And an indoor usable space requirement, but not total lot area. And then they don't have um that maximum occupancy of thirty five. Um, anywhere, it's it's either a maximum of six, give or take. A maximum of twelve, give or take, or no maximum. Um, and so going back through the history of it, we couldn't find where those numbers came from. So I just wanted to to add that context.
Okay. Brian, let's keep moving.
Okay, the next one is um one of those more technical changes. And this is related to the architecture requirements of um mixed use buildings, apartment buildings. Uh, so the the requirement is that if you're building a a a structure that's more than four stories. Uh, within the CD four or CD four W. Um, after the fourth story, you have to set back uh the building facade by ten feet. Uh, in discussions with uh different applicants, projects that we've approved, projects that uh may come in. What they're looking at is, well, if you're allowing us to go up six stories, it makes more sense. For the structure to go up five stories and then set back ten feet instead of going up four and then back ten feet for the upper two stories. Um, so I I mean, I think it's up up for debate, I mean, and interpretation on this. Um, to us, it makes sense that the, or to me personally, it makes sense that the uppermost story is only the only one that is required. Be set back the ten feet. Um, I guess that's it's all, you know, up to your architectural preferences for a structure.
But clearly, the the um. Um, developers would prefer it be the fifth floor because they lose less rentable space.
Sure, sure.
Alright, we just need to keep that in the back of our minds as um as we ponder this.
Yeah.
Right, and really think about why it was set up this way in the first place.
Right. And then the only other, the other part to this, this isn't really based on the changing. Where that ten foot setback begins or doesn't begin. Um, it's allowing like architectural features to project within that ten foot setback, things like the the. Whether it's truly an architectural feature, or whether it's like the stairwell or elevator that can project within that ten feet. Um, for the structure and limit how much it can actually project within that that ten foot setback requirement. Um, this next one was. Let me make sure that this wasn't one that we had addressed in the last memo. Okay, so this is another technical architectural one that essentially requires that uh the win each. Set of windows needs to be set um at least thirty inches above the finished floor. Uh, architects kind of have been pointing out this one as well and saying that. Uh, there's plenty of historic buildings within the city where they were not built to this standard. The the windows went down to the floor, or they're only a foot off of the floor, or any, you know, any number less than thirty inches. Um, so it's uh, you know, I don't think this is necessary in terms of getting a better. Finished product architecturally when compared to any other building. It's it's uh, you know, I think this just opens up the possibility that the windows are closer to the floor, which can add some. Some variation to to buildings. And then if it helps, I know it's hard to just like talk about these like architectural standards, we can always provide pictures. Uh, and follow up uh correspondence. Uh, this next one is just to get the marine commercial zone to line up with uh the rest of the zones. Uh, which um would increase the the finished floor to finished floor uh at thirteen feet. Instead of ten feet, so this would match up with all the other mixed use zones. And as same for the increase from the the maximum of twenty to twenty five feet for the first floor. Uh, which would line up with the rest of the zones. Uh, another technical one, this is about facade articulation. So there's a requirement that when buildings, uh mixed use buildings uh are. Over a hundred feet in length, that every so often, the the building needs to be broken up um or articulated. Uh, to kind of make it look like a different building. Um, so it does it doesn't look like a monotonous block for for two hundred feet. So uh, one of the issues was uh that when you are. What what a articulation is required to be includes all of these standards listed here. Uh, and the issue is that this is a pretty extensive list of requirements. Uh, so what we're proposing is to lessen it a bit, but still require that at least three of A, B. Uh, C gets merged with B, D, E, and F um are are required to be provided. Um, to officially articulate a building that's over one hundred feet in length. Uh, seven is a pretty simple one. The issue is that health club is its own use, its own defined use within the regulations. But then within the definitions of personal service establishment and retail personal service, uh, health club is listed. Uh, so it's confusing for staff to determine if a health club is personal service establishment, if it's retail or if it's own thing. So we're proposing to just delete the the callouts to health club within personal service establishment and retail personal service. Um, number eight is about uh certain sections of the regulations uh that are. Either allowed or not allowed to be varied by the zoning board of appeals. So within our regulations, it says that A through H, you cannot make a variance for a variance application for. It it's in our opinion that that might be an overreach. Uh, so what we're proposing is to delete floor area, impervious surface coverage, parking. And maximum dimensions of vehicular parking lanes uh from. Being applied for for variance, if I said that right. So anything that's crossed out here, you would be allowed to apply for a variance of.
What was the logic of having those things beyond the list? And has this been the list for some period of time? Is this what it was?
No, so this is, this is new from the new regulations.
This is brand new.
Yeah.
So a year ago, we could have applied for a variance on parking, and now we can't, and you're proposing making it so that we can again.
Right, uh, the issue is uh, I don't think we can say you cannot apply for a variance of parking. Uh, the purpose of the ZBA is to vary the regulations and the statutes really only speak to uses as being. One of the things that um cannot be buried. Um, same with like lot or building site width. Um, you're required when you are either creating a new lot to go through uh the subdivision process. Or do a free cut if you have a free cut available. Um, but we can't give you uh an approval on a subdivision if you show a lot that doesn't comply with the minimum lot width requirement. So we're we're keeping in that um, like these items are things that we can't think of examples of when somebody would need a variance for these specific. Uh, requirements.
Okay, let's move.
Back to vessels, um, this is similar to we had discussed last time, I think it was recreational vehicles, or if it was trailers. Um, and that there's multiple sections of the regulations that need to get modified in order to fix um the issues. With vessels that exist today. Uh, so the first problem is that vessel, the vessel definition itself, which is here, is uh. It kind of grabs um all different kinds of watercraft. So there's boats, which has its own definition, yachts, ships, which have its own definition, canoes, kayaks, paddleboards, jet skis. Or recreational or other watercraft. Um, so because we limit how many vessels you can have on a property. Um, that means that we're limiting how many canoes or kayaks or paddleboards or jet skis that you as a residential homeowner could have on your property. Which is not what we were intending to do, and it's not something that our enforcement staff really can handle. If somebody's storing two canoes on their property, is that is that supposed to be a zoning violation? So what we're proposing is to delete the vessel definition and then revise the boat and ship definition. Um, it, we've been looking at this too, these, both these definitions might need some more specificity added. In terms of what actually is a modest size or what is a large sized um watercraft. So this is still like a work in progress. Uh, so that's step number one is to fix the definitions. And then what we are proposing then to do is to go into the accessory use table and state. If you're allowed, based on what zone you're in, if you're allowed, not allowed, or how you're allowed to store boats or ships. So we're proposing, these would be new to the accessory use table, and then so all of these, whether they're permitted, not permitted, permitted with limitations, et cetera, would be would be new. So because we're saying that within this table that there are limitations associated with these uses. We need to go in and say what those limitations are. So we would go into the limitations section and we would, we're proposing to say. Um, for boats, if you are accessory to a marine and vessel use, which is its specific category of uses within the use table. Um, then we're gonna determine, we're gonna send you to a special permit and you can, the commission will determine screening, storage area. And maximum number of boats that can be stored on the property. And then for single family homes, two family homes, we're saying that no more than two boats. Um, can be stored on the property and that they all must be stored in the rear yard. And then for ships, um, similar requirements as boats, essentially saying that you're gonna go to the commission. Uh, you to ask uh for permission to do it, and then the screening, storage and maximum number of ships will be determined subject to the special permit requirements.
So no boats in driveways?
Correct, I I as long if if the driveway is leading to the rear yard and the driveway is in the rear yard, then you can store it there. And so the rear yard is front setback plus twenty feet. Uh, this was one that we in the last memo had proposed to um delete just because of. The the how the regulation is worded, um, I don't think it was worded correctly, or it was kind of confusing for staff to interpret. And it almost made it sound like anytime anyone wants to cut down a tree anywhere, you have to come in and get a zoning permit for. Um, what we're proposing to do is to modify that text. Uh, to state the following, which is essentially what we think the intent of that regulation was, what, which is. If you're cutting down any trees that are this large, so eight uh diameter of eight inches or more. Uh, and you're within one of these zones and within thirty feet of a a residential zone. Then you have to come in and uh get a permit from whoever the a proper authority is, whether it's the zone uh planning and zoning staff. Or whether it's potentially the commission.
Okay, move on.
I'm sorry, Louis, I was trying to unmute myself. I have a a quick question about this. Um, everybody's been talking and and about lantern flies and the trees to heaven. Or tree of have tree to heaven, or whatever it's called. Um, when you have those things that, you know, the state talks about getting rid of, um, is that something that you have to get a permit for?
Um, that's honestly a good question, because we have, within the regulations that we adopted, we put in sort of tree clearing requirements. That you can't just go on to a lot and cut down every tree on it. Um, you have to come in and then. Uh, depending on how many or the size of the area that you're proposing to clear, you have to get some sort of permission. Uh, but I don't think the cases come up like where if you have an infestation of a spotted lantern fly and the state is telling you, you clear these trees. We've, we haven't had it come up if you need to get local approval, or if the state's saying, you know, I don't know if that situation's ever come up, but we could talk with Alexis too and see what, what she thinks on that.
Well, I can tell you, I'm, I'm planning on taking six of them down. Um, so if I have to get a permit, I'd like to do it quickly.
Yeah. And the problem is those trees are all over the place.
Oh my God.
Going in the merit, going in the merit.
Before the lantern flies came, I always thought they were, you know, big sumac trees. Um, I, I just can't believe it.
Oh yeah, they're doing a number of my grapes.
Yeah. Okay, Brian, move us on.
All right. So the next one, um, which is definitely trickier is heights in the flood zone. So that I'm up. This one was drafted by Steve, so if we have any questions that I can answer, we might have to wait for Steve to return. All right. So this memo is specific to changes in how we determine height and stories and, uh, those type of measurements, specific to, um, structures such as single family homes within the flood zone. Uh, so there's kind of two, uh, kind of, I don't know if they're opposing, but they're kind of tricky, um, components to this, which is one, we need to be able to allow for people to raise their house out of the flood zone to be flood compliant, uh, which we increased to BFE plus two. But we're also trying to prevent, uh, i- if you, if you're down in row eight and you'll see some single family homes that were constructed and they almost appear to look like they're a four-story structure. Part of that is probably because of how in the past, under the old regulations, we measured, uh, the, the height of the structure to the midpoint of the roof line. And when you do certain kinds of roof lines, I believe they're gambrels. Uh, it kind of like raises that number up. So it really makes that top half story look like a full story. And now, uh, because the first level doesn't count as a story, because that's what you're using to park your car to get out of the flood zone. Then you do two and a half on top of that, but now it's kind of looking like a four-story, four-story structure. So we're kind of trying to balance here those two issues. Um, so the first step, um, is to revise the definition of basement. This isn't really a substantive change. It's really just moving. When a story, when we call something a story from the definition of basement into the definition of story, which is a more appropriate place for it. Um, so this is kind of just a general definition of what a basement is. And then within the story definition, which is included in this memo, you'll see that we're saying when something actually becomes a, a story towards that two and a half limit for a single family house. Um, lowest floor, this is just adding, um, the word except. Um, so essentially it's saying that, uh, the, the lowest floor of the lowest enclosed area, including basement, except an unfinished or flood resistant closure used solely for the parking of vehicles, um, would not be considered the building's lowest floor. So that gets, um, the ability for these people to put, uh, that lowest level or lowest floor to be where they're going to park their cars. That's not going to count against their story requirement. And then, um, the, the level above that, which will be flood compliant is where we're going to start measuring stories. All right. This is where it starts to get tricky. Um, and it's going to take probably more discussions to figure out, um, if this works, if, or if this number here needs to get tweaked. Um, so this is modifying the definition of a story. Uh, so, uh, number one here is where you'll see why we moved the, the language within the basement definition, uh, to, to be here. So it's essentially saying, uh, a basement becomes a story when the ceiling is more than three feet above the finished grade, um, of the structure as measured from the principal frontage. So once, which is how we used to do it under the old regulations, um, we said, once that first, uh, the, the, the ceiling is more than three feet above the finished grade, that's when, uh, we call it a story. Um, so that's just kind of reinserting language from the old regulations. Two, uh, so what we're trying to do here is limit how tall that first level can be while letting it be tall enough to get you out of the flood zone. Uh, so within the flood zone, the lowest floor, which is not a basement, is not a story provided that it's wholly or partially below the base load elevation, meaning that that portion of the building is in the flood zone. So it's below whatever flood zone you're in. So if you're at BFE 12, or excuse me, AE 12, that some portion of that level is at or below elevation 12. And then the base, so the bottom of that lowest floor is more than five feet below the base flood elevation. So the reason for that is we're, what we're trying to do is we're not trying to say, well, the base of my lowest floor is only one foot below the flood zone level. So now I get a free 10 feet to, for my, this level, which we're not going to call a story. So now I get a free essential lease story. And then I could do two and a half on top of that. So we're trying to find the middle ground there. And then lastly, for structures on piling, so this is more for, um, velocity zones. So the VE flood zones, uh, this is, so the area between the ground and the floor next above it shall not count as a story provided. Uh, so this is kind of the, the same as essentially here, but it's a different requirement because when you're building on pilings, there's no, uh, there's no like floor at the, the bottom of the, the structure. It's just the ground in some cer- uh, circumstances. So we're saying that that, that still counts essentially as your lowest floor. Uh, we just don't want people kind of making, uh, you know, kind of reading between the lines on that one. Um, so height, um, so what we're proposing to do is we, we reinserted the height, uh, measurements within the regulations, but we need to be more specific on where we're measuring height from and height to. Uh, so if you recall, I believe we said now in all the single family, two family zones, uh, the height of a structure is 35 feet to the midpoint, 40 feet to the peak. Um, so we're saying that you're measuring from the finished grade, um, and you're going to, depending on which roof type you're using, where that midpoint and peak are. And again, the purpose of this is, um, when you get roofs that look like this, um, in the past, it was, you could see here that you're measuring, you know, here for the billing height. Um, so what that does is it kind of raises the height of the structure. Um, so what we want to do is lower it to be here, which would ultimately pull down the top of the structure and still give you a half story, but kind of take away that ability to kind of make what looks from the outside like a full, uh, a full story. And then kind of just, uh, included on that is, whereas this definition above is going to measure to the midpoint, so height as the building or structure. Um, there's going to be a total height definition, which is that peak, uh, measurement. So this is measuring to the highest point of the structure from the finished grade. And then here's what that would look like within the table. So again, sort of difficult to explain, difficult to visualize, but the goal is.
Oh, sorry, Brian. How does this go with, uh, the email we got today? Is this sort of in line with that or?
Yeah. So you, I had forwarded you an email that we had received, um, from a group in row eight and, uh, I think their concern is where we measure, um, the building height from. So historically, we always, whether it was old regulations, new regulations, we've always measured from finished grade. And what we do is we, we cap how much bill you could add to your property before, you know, we're not saying, you, you're not going to be able to add 10 feet of fill to your property and raise your finished grade by 10 feet and saying, well, now I could build two and a half stories on top of that and 35 feet and, and 40. The requirement is that if you add fill, you only get three feet of additional fill to measure from. And, uh, and we're, we're going to continue to measure from finished grade. Um, the issue is if you measured from existing grade, there's still the ability that you could, you don't have to fill your property. You could excavate and lower your finished grade, but because we're saying, oh, you measure from the existing grade, now you're, we're essentially giving you additional height because now you're measuring from a point lower than what has become your finished grade. Uh, so for our purposes, there's going to be times when people only add a foot of fill, they're going to add two feet of fill, whatever it is that they need to essentially level the lot for them to construct. And we also added in those, uh, fill and grade requirements where you can't go over a certain amount of, uh, rise overrun within so far of your property lines. And we also measure further away from your structure of where your finished grade, um, truly is. So that's, you, you kind of can't get, uh, tricky, which we saw in the past where, uh, you know, you can grade really close to where your structure is proposed to go and say, look, that's where my finished grade is. And now I get to build on top of that. What we say is we have, now you have to measure further away from that and have a more gradual fill. So you're not going to be able to kind of build a mountain on your property. Um, so we're kind of trying to balance all of these, you know, moving parts to lets you have a reasonable ability to construct a, a, a typically expected size house on your property. Um, and then throw in the flood zone stuff and you kind of get this, this complicated issue that, um, hopefully this resolves.
Okay, um, is that the last one, uh, Brian?
I believe it was. I believe we went over impervious surface at the last one. Um, okay. Yep. Then that should be it.
Okay, good.
Good, because it's getting dark.
Um, I'm not sure these are entirely in order, but the next item is approval of minutes of the, um, August 21st meeting. They were sent out to everyone. Can I have a motion?
I can make it.
Richard, uh, Richard moved Hector, excuse me, Hector seconded. Uh, again, just with a show of hands, all those in favor. Okay.
Um, stating so is not here.
Okay, Nick abstains.
Also abstaining, I was not there.
And Anna abstains.
I didn't get a chance to read them.
And JJ abstains. That's fun.
As well as myself. So that makes four people, Darius, Nick, Anna, and JJ abstaining.
Okay, it's still, we still have a majority. Um, uh, comments of director, um, Brian?
Uh, nothing for me.
Okay.
As far as I can remember.
I, I have a couple of items. Um, the, uh, first is, uh, I received a letter from the mayor today uh, regarding our, our, uh, policy. It's, uh, dated, uh, actually August 30th. Uh, but it, uh, relates to, uh, our policy of not requiring, uh, parking uh, in, uh, the, um, most urban districts of, uh, uh, the city. Um, I have told the mayor that, uh, we will discuss this matter further. So Brian, I'm going to ask you to put it on the agenda, uh, for our next meeting. Um, and, um, perhaps, uh, invite, uh, Jim from TMP, uh, who I think, uh, may have been the author of, uh, at least portions of this letter, uh, to come and speak with us, uh, about it.
Sure.
Uh, I would also, uh, like as soon as you can, um, whether it's tomorrow, but certainly by the end of the week, uh, to get copies of this letter out to, uh, all of the members of, uh, the commission. They can be up to date and, uh, prepared, uh, to, uh, discuss it at our September 18th meeting. Um, final decision on this rests not with the mayor, but with us. Uh, I just want to remind you of that. Uh, but, uh, as a courtesy to him, uh, we'll, uh, be discussing it, uh, further. Uh, second, uh, item is, uh, I need to appoint a nominating committee. Uh, as I think I've mentioned before, under the bylaws we adopted two years ago, um, uh, the chair can only serve, uh, for three years. I've actually served six because I served before the new bylaws were in place. And in any case, according to our bylaws, uh, our annual meeting is in October. Uh, so I need, uh, tonight to appoint a, uh, nominating committee, which will come back, uh, with, uh, recommendation for officers going forward, uh, as of our first, uh, meeting in, uh, October. Um, I would also ask, um, that if you're interested, uh, in being an officer, those offices being chair, vice chair, who fills in for the chair in the chair's absence, and secretary, um, let me know. Um, I'm asking you to let me know because, uh, I'm appointing myself as a member of, uh, the nominating, uh, committee. I'd also like to ask, uh, Richard, if he's willing to serve. Um, why don't you think about that? Um, while, uh, I also ask, uh, Darius, uh, if he'd be willing to, um, serve on the, uh, nominating committee. Um, it'll require, I believe, only one meeting. And, um, uh, my preference is to have that be a face-to-face meeting. Um, but we could do it at the Norwalk Inn, uh, if you, uh, would like. Um, so, um, I need to know, uh, tonight, if not tonight, I absolutely need to know by our September 18th meeting. Uh, because the, uh, nominating committee needs to be approved by the three, the, the current three officers. That's myself, Nick Kanter and, uh, JJ. Um, people who serve on the nominating committee, uh, cannot serve, uh, as officers. So, uh, I'd ask, uh, Darius and Richard, if you'd, um, uh, let me know, you can just drop me an email. Let me know if you're, uh, interested in, uh, serving on, uh, the nominating committee. Uh, so, uh, again, uh, our next, uh, meeting is, uh, September 18th. Um, Nick, did you want to talk at all about vape shops?
Oh yeah, I forgot. Uh, I, I wonder if we want to put something in the rewrite, sorry, the kids are screaming now, in the new, um, guys, one second please. Um, if we want to do something with the vape shops, uh, whether or not we want to make not approval or something like that, a moratorium or some version of something with the new rewrite, with the new updates that we're making, want to fold something in there. I'm sure folks have seen some of the emails or started news articles about like the proliferation. One thing we could do is just make it not criminal across the city or by special permit, open to that mechanism, but.
Anna, you're muted. I think it's, uh, mute your other, here you go.
I'm sorry, Brian, you, oh, Brian.
Yeah, Anna, Anna was looking at speak, but she was muted.
Sorry, I put on my, my bedtime Zoom and just got confused. I'd be interested, uh, because we did change the regu- or we wrote new regulations. I think Darius was spearheading some of that last year. Um, I'd be interested. I'd be interested to see some data from the city, a number of vape shops we currently have, when they came into operation. So whether we, you know, have we actually had a proliferation of new vape shops since the new regulations went into effect? Or are these things that were already in the pipeline, does enforcement, the police, all the people that have been involved in the problems with vape shop, have ideas about how to adjust our regulations? If they need to be readjusted, or if there needs to be a moratorium or not? I'm not against the idea, but I just, sometimes I'm not sure if the changes that have been put in place have actually had time to take effect yet, or, you know, or if what we're seeing is from from the prior situation.
Brian, can you have the staff begin to gather that data? Add to it through the police department, how many of these vape shops have been cited for selling marijuana?
Sure. Yep, Amelia's been working on that, so.
I can add that, I spoke to John Hadaki about it, with a couple of them that had some issues, and I remember him saying that one or two of them were already in the process of citation under our new regulations. But either one or more of them got approved under the prior, under the prior regs, and would not have been approved under the new ones. But I don't remember all of that, and that wasn't, I was just asking about two places. So that's why I'm curious.
Okay.
So, so when you say got approved prior to the regulation, to my understanding, none of the vape shops are authorized to sell marijuana unless they are licensed.
No. Vape shops selling marijuana or fentanyl is completely unrelated to the zoning regulations. Like, that's just criminal behavior.
What she's speaking about, really, are the shops that open without permits, the shops that are, yeah.
There does seem to be like a lot of, you know, a lot of the shops opening up in close proximity of each other. So that might be something else.
And that's what the initial policy, the one-mile perimeter regulation was about, but also some of these places weren't on the books. And I think that that's what Brian, as well as the police department, they're all working on right now, which would also help give us a better sense of the data around this issue.
Brian, will you have the data by the 18th? Or is it something we should push back to our first October meeting?
Let's play, I think Amelia had already been looking into a lot of this, because what we were doing is we were mapping out who potentially would be considered a vape shop under our current regulations, who had been previously, whether, and is operating. Again, probably most, if not all of them were approved under old regulations, because they were considered retail. So now that we added in the vape shop definition and that one-mile radius, I don't know if we've actually issued a, if we have, it's been very few, but we will definitely get that data. I think we could have it by the 18th.
Okay, if you have it by the 18th, let's see if it's possible to get it on the agenda. If not, let's get it on the first October meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Comments from commission members?
Yes, just to add on to the discussion, you know, we had initially discussed the perimeter, perimeter regulations that I also thought that we should discuss at liquor stores as well, and I still believe that that should be a part of the discussion.
I'd be open to that.
I certainly have no, no problem with that.
I agree.
I just like it, you know, with everything to be from a data-driven perspective, how many do we have currently? Has there been an increase in recent years or not? Have there been problems related to them? Or are they and the vape shops feeling a need in the market? And it's just an issue of how many do we want, and making sure no business is doing illegal drug sales.
Okay.
Freaked me out when they were selling fentanyl.
Yeah.
I believe everyone was equally freaked out about.
All right, any other business to come before the commission?
Yeah, I think that a discussion at some point on what I thought was a really interesting conversation tonight on the issue of feasibility, we should have it. Normally, I don't get too excited about how much something costs, you know, as long as there's a return on it. But I thought it was really interesting tonight, when the gentleman talked about the payback period and the fact that he had a 10-year lease. You know, if we had the authority to say that if a landlord wants to lease his building, he has to do it, then he can spread the cost out amongst the tenants, he's going to get the return on the investment, et cetera. So that would seem fair, but I thought that was really interesting, what the guy had to say tonight about the 10-year timeframe versus the 50-year payout. And those are, what would happen when the tenant moves out if the landlord decided?
I think, but I think, Richard, what we were concentrating on...
Oh, I get it.
It was not, it was not the rooftop, not the rooftop, but yeah, the...
No, I understand, I wasn't talking about his application specifically, just the example of, you know, what actually is feasibility.
No, I think you're absolutely right.
And do we require, have we been requiring that of tenants? And not just...
Well, that was, that was...
I would have thought it was required of the owner.
Been an owner, that's kind of...
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question, Anna. You know, I'm not sure we've been discriminating.
I'm not sure that we had a tenant that we, we, we did, made this requirement.
Maybe it was an accident, or a sort of an error that we put that condition on that cannabis thing, given that it was a tenant and not an owner.
You know, there's, there are lots of tenants where they are, you know, they have long-term leases. A 10-year lease is kind of unusual, I think, for business of that sort. You know, if you've got a 30-year lease, you can talk about the return on the investment for the business that's that's putting up the, you know, the solar panels. It depends on how long the lease is, I guess. And the owner doesn't come before us, the business owner comes before us. And they're tenants, you know, so we don't want to not be able to acquire a whole cannibal of things just because they're tenants. So it's, it's, it's a lot to think about.
It's a factual issue, absolutely. I agree. I'm just saying it was an interesting, to me, interesting conversation tonight.
Right.
Agreed.
All right, anything else? If, if not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, hands went up quickly. JJ, JJ moved, and Hector seconded.
We're all excited as how these meetings are moving the last couple of weeks.
Our next meeting is September 18th. All those in favor of adjournment? Take care, everyone.